All right. The meeting of the Marlboro Zoning Board of Appeals is now in session. I will call the role of the members present. Thomas Pope.
Present.
Tom Golden.
Present.
Bob Levine.
Present.
And I'm Ralph La... I am chairing the meeting tonight. Paul Genta, who's our permanent chairman, has recused himself because he is an abutter. So he will not be participating in the meeting tonight. The notice of the meeting was published and will be read by the secretary. Tom, would you read that, please?
Yep. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on June 30th at 7:00 PM in the Marlboro City Hall and remotely on the petition of the below name persons seeking an appeal as follows. The petition. Applicant seeks a special permit under Section 650, Article 6, Section 23D, Flood Plane and Wetland Protection District or District of Marlboro zoning ordinance to conduct certain filling and excavation work in a floodplain area, all in connection with its proposed 188-unit multifamily apartment project. Property is located at 339 Boston Post Road East, MAP 7235, 7328, 2426. Plans and other information are on file in the Zoning Board of Appeals office on the basement level of City Hall. For further assistance, please contact the board at (508) 460-3768. All interested persons are invited to the public hearing. Applicant or representative must be present.
Thank you, Tom. For the benefit of those involved and participating in this meeting, either visually or by phone, I want to reiterate that the issue that's before the board is a very narrow one tonight. We are here to hear a petition for a special permit related to the excavation and filling work in a floodplain area. We are not involved or concerned with any other issues that may be involved with this petition or with this project. So we will limit discussion and participation by all to that very narrow area. I would also mention that because we are only four members, if there is an affirmative vote taken, the applicant will require four affirmative votes for approval. So a single negative vote would amount to a denial. We have a narrative from the applicant, from Attorney Falk, and would like to read that into the record. Tom, would you do that, please?
Do you have it? I don't think I have it.
Oh, you don't have it? I'm sorry. Hold on.
Okay. Dear Board Members, On behalf of my client, WP Marlboro Mass. Owner LLC, Waypoint, I respectfully submit this memo outlining our application for a special permit in the floodplain and wetland protection district. Waypoint proposes a high-end multifamily project at 339 Boston Post Road East, the McGee property. The site has 27 acres and over 70% of the site will remain as open space with only the portion of the site along Route 20 being developed with apartment buildings and accessory parking. The project includes land within the city's floodplain and wetland protection district and therefore requires a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals in accordance with the floodplain and wetland district ordinance. Section 650-23 of the zoning ordinance. This type of special permit is different than the applications usually seen by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The board's jurisdiction is established by Section 650-23, which is designated to protect the public and neighboring properties from flooding. The board's criteria for granting a special permit is set forth in Section 650-23G as follows. Criteria of approval. The Board of Appeals may issue a special permit here on the subject to other provisions of this zoning chapter if it finds that the proposed construction and use and/or proposed change in grade will not degrade from the intent and purpose of this district nor endanger the health and safety of the public nor the legitimate use of other land in the city. In deciding on an application for a special permit under this section, but without limiting the generalality of the foregoing, the board shall assure to a degree consistent with a reasonable use of the premises for purposes permitted in this use district in which located that the proposed construction, use and/or change of grade will not obstruct or divert flood flow, reduce natural storage, or increase stormwater runoff to the extent of raising high water levels on any other land to any significant degree. The proposed system of drainage and/or private sewage disposal will not cause siltation, pollution, or otherwise endanger public health. The proposed construction shall have street or other appropriate access that shall be at least one foot above base flood elevation. Instructions designed for human occupancy shall have lowest floor including basement, heating, electrical, and sanitary sewer systems at least two feet above base flood elevation. Fill deposited to bring the lowest floor to the required elevation shall extend to at least 15 feet beyond the limits of the structure thereon. Based upon the project's site and building design, we believe the board may make all of the required findings necessary to grant the special permit. The project will fill existing floodplain areas on the eastern and western portions of the site. To compensate for this filling, compensatory floodplain areas are proposed on site, which will provide approximately 7,145 cubic feet of additional flood storage, a net increase from existing conditions. The proposed compensatory flood storage will be achieved by lowering existing grades slightly along the edge of the floodplain on the eastern and western portions of the site to provide additional storage at the same elevations as is proposed to be filled. In addition, another 8,866 cubic feet of flood storage is being added to a separate wetland replication area on site. Our application materials and exhibits at the public hearing depict the proposed fill and compensatory floodplain areas and demonstrate compliance with building design standards. Based upon the net increase in flood storage, the improvements from this project will reduce the risk of flooding that could potentially impact neighboring properties. Our design team used conservative assumptions when designing our onsite drainage system going beyond what is required by the city and state standards. The risk of flooding is high with the property in its current condition, and this project will be an improvement with respect to reducing the risk of flooding in the vicinity of the site. We look forward to the board's public hearing on the project. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Brian R. Falk.
Thank you, Tom. Now, going forward, let me just outline how we will run the meeting. We will ask the applicant or their representatives to present any material they would like for the board's consideration. Plans and other materials will be shown on the screen, so that they should be available at all with a video link. Once the applicant has completed their presentation, we will invite questions from the board. And when the board's questions have been satisfied, we will invite members of the audience to speak, first for anyone who is...would like to speak in support of the petition, and then those who would like to speak in opposition. When you are invited to speak, we would ask that you state your name, first of all, and your address, and your relationship, if any, to the participant or to the matter at hand. Okay. Having said that, we would invite Attorney Falk to present the material to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everyone hear me? Just want to make sure. For the record again, Brian Falk from Maric O'Connell appearing on behalf of the applicant. With me tonight are Tom Moran, Senior Development Manager with Waypoint, Dave Robinson and Carlton Quinn from Allen &amp; Major, our site engineers, and also joining us is Goddard Consulting, our wetlands professionals. And I just wanted to start by saying that we are grateful for the board's efforts to hold this hearing remotely. I know this is all new to everyone. We appreciate being able to continue to conduct business and work with the city considering our application during this time. As mentioned, Waypoint proposes a high-end multifamily project at 339 Boston Post Road East, which is the McGee Farm property. Again, the site is 26 acres. Over 70% of the site will remain as green space following our project. We're only developing along Route 20, the existing built areas of the McGee Farm. And again, I know this type of application is one that the ZBA doesn't see very often. You're used to dealing with dimensional variances and special permits. But as the chair mentioned, the zoning ordinance here asks that you take on a very specific environmental analysis role. You're considering whether our project meets the purposes of the floodplain district, which is designed to protect the public and neighboring properties from flooding, and whether we meet the criteria for a special permit in the floodplain district. As mentioned in my memo, the project will fill existing floodplain areas along small areas of the eastern and western portions of the site. To compensate for this filling, compensatory floodplain areas are proposed on site, which will provide approximately 7,000 cubic feet of additional flood storage, so a net increase of flood storage on the site. Again, in addition, we'll have another 8,000 cubic feet of flood storage added to a separate wetland replication area on site. Based on the net increase in flood storage, the risk of flooding is higher with the property in its current condition, and this project will be an improvement with respect to reducing the risk of flooding in the vicinity of the site. So if we could just scroll ahead to the site layout plan, I think it's the second or third slide down. Yep, just one more. Great, thank you very much. Earlier tonight, the board received a report from Conservation Agent Priscilla Ryder on behalf of the Conservation Commission, which found that our application meets the criteria of the floodplain district for a special permit. The board also received a report from City Engineer Tom DePercio, having reviewed our drainage report and stormwater analysis and finding that the project provides adequate compensatory flood storage. So like the Conservation Commission and the city engineer, we believe we meet the criteria for a special permit in the floodplain district. With that, I wanted to turn things over to Allen &amp; Major, just to walk the board briefly through our site plan and our floodplain work.
Yep. Thank you, Brian, and good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is David Robinson. I'm a project site designer and engineer with Allen &amp; Major Associates, and tonight I'll be presenting a brief overview of how we've improved the site with regards to floodplain and compensatory storage. So as shown on the screen in front of you, the existing floodplain is shown as this heavy black dashed line, which generally follows the outline of the wetland. And it's also important to note that on the existing site, there is currently no stormwater management system. And so as Brian mentioned, as you can see on the eastern portion of the site, there's a small area where we're filling in the wetland there with some parking, and then there's also areas kind of to the south of the site, which we're calling the western side, which have pockets of filling. Yep, that's it. And the blue cyan lines on the...on the plan are the culverts that are on site, which we will be cleaning up. So if you could please scroll to the next...to the next slide. Oh, up a couple. Up one more. Yep, right here. So this is the eastern side of the site. This 100-year FEMA floodplain is at elevation 275, so it follows the 275 contour. And on this exhibit, you can see the areas that are hatched in red are areas of fill, and those volumes are calculated on the right...lower right-hand corner of the page for the existing. There's 129,038 cubic feet of fill in those red areas, and the areas shown in green are the creation of the floodplain storage. And as you can see, there's more storage proposed, and the increase is just north of 66,000 cubic feet on site. So just to note that the methodology, which has been...which we got sign off from engineering today, is to create compensatory floodplain storage at the same elevation that it's being filled in, foot by foot. So for example, if you're filling in between contours 270 and 271, you're required to provide equal or greater compensatory floodplain at that same elevation. So that's kind of the methodology. So there is an increase on this eastern portion of the site, and the black area that's hatched is unaltered existing floodplain. No work is proposed, no filling is proposed in there. It's just proposed to remain as is. And if you could please scroll down to the next slide. This is the...up one more, right here. This is kind of the rear, what we're calling the western portion of the site. Same idea with the exhibit. Red is filling, so there's three distinct areas of filling, and the green is creation of floodplain by lowering the grades in those areas. The calculations are provided at the lower left-hand corner. 21,900 cubic feet are being filled, and 22,880 cubic feet are calculated to be created as compensatory flood storage. So you have, again, a net benefit on this side. And then if you could please scroll down one more sheet. So engineering had previously asked if we could provide additional compensatory flood storage on site over and above that 7,100 cubic feet in those two eastern and western areas, and we're proposing a wetland replication area at the rear of the site, and that is all going to be excavated and would be applied as compensatory flood storage. So that is hatched in green. 8,866 cubic feet of flood storage there. I'll also note that the buildings are proposed to be at least two feet above the flood elevation in accordance with the regulations. And additionally, we're proposing to install a subsurface, very large subsurface drainage system, which would reduce the peak flows of runoff leaving the site, and reducing the overall volume of runoff leaving the site by nearly a third as well. Those systems can accommodate up to 60,000 cubic feet of stormwater storage on site in addition to the compensatory flood storage. So what's leaving the site under proposed conditions is less than what is leaving the site under existing conditions, and the proponent is also willing to clean up the culverts as needed to improve functionality. So for these reasons, we believe that we're improving the site with regards to flood storage, decreasing downstream volumes, and creating three distinct areas of proposed compensatory flood storage on site, which will improve any downstream conditions. At this time, I think that that will wrap up my portion of the presentation, and I'd like to turn it back to the board.
Are there any other representative members that would speak to the petition?
Mr. Chairman, at this point, we're happy to hear questions and comments from the board and from the public. Thank you.
All right. I'll first ask for the board. Are there any questions from members of the board? All right, hearing none. I would invite any members of the public who are on the call to address the petitioner with questions or address the board. I see Cindy Zomar has requested to speak. Cindy, are you there?
Yes, I am, thank you. I just wanted to ask...okay, I'm hearing an echo on my side. Just wanted to ask the board, with all of this project entails here, with all the floodplain changing and replicating wetlands and so forth, when it says that the high water levels are not...will not be raised to any significant degree for the abutters and so forth, what does significant degree mean to somebody who's had water in their basements? And beyond that, what positive piece does this project bring to the city and the city residents who are currently here?
Attorney Falk?
Sure. I'll turn to Dave from Allen &amp; Major to discuss the high water levels, but as we mentioned before, by adding a net increase of 7,000 cubic feet of flood storage capacity, the site has a greater risk of flooding right now without these improvements. With these improvements, the property and neighboring properties that are at a lower risk of flooding. So just by doing this work, we're making improvements to the neighborhood and therefore to the city.
Yeah, and I would just follow that up quickly by saying, as I outlined in my previous presentation, we're reducing the amount of water that's leaving the site by installing these very large drainage systems. We're also increasing the available capacity for flood storage on site by excavating these areas and providing these compensatory flood storage areas. And in addition to that, we'll be cleaning out the culverts on site, which, you know, I'm sure haven't been cleaned out in some time, which will only improve hydraulic flow. So these are all, you know, benefits to the neighboring communities and improvements for the site. This was a large component of the project from the beginning. That's all.
Well, I guess if you're considering an improvement to the neighborhood, 188 units standing four stories tall, and all those cars entering Route 20 every day, I don't know if the price to pay to have our wetlands replicated is worthwhile, but...
Right, but, you know, staying on the topic of the floodplain, we are increasing the floodplain on site.
That, I guess time will tell on something like that. I've heard promises before from other developers in other areas of the city, and somehow it never quite works out the way it was planned, but what happens to the wetlands that you're replicating? All the critters that are in the current wetlands, are they getting relocation packages? How does that work? I just...I can't imagine replicating a wetlands and bringing it back to where it should be. So, but that's just my opinion, I guess. Thank you.
We have a letter from Priscilla Ryder that was mentioned as...from the Conservation Commission. Ms. Ryder, would you care to comment about the petition?
The Conservation Commission reviewed this, and again, just on the narrow... There's regulations that say this is how you...you know, if you fill wetland, you have to create another bowl that the water will flow in, and so they've met those criteria. So it's from our...from a technical perspective, we're all, you know, they've met that.
All right. Are there any other comments? Any other questions from the board? I see...I think...I'm sorry, do I see another hand up? Would you state your name, please, and your question or comment?
Ralph, if somebody wants to unmute themselves, they have to go to the bar and unmute themselves on that little microphone, and if they're on a phone line, they have to hit star six to unmute themselves, because I think everybody got muted to begin with. So just make sure you unmute yourself to speak if you would like to speak.
All right, we may be having technical difficulties, but we'll give it another minute.
Hi, this is Victoria Rule. Can you hear me now?
We can, yes. Would you state...is this Victoria?
Yes, my name is Victoria Rule. I live at...on Dean Road in Marlboro. I'm concerned about the last slide that you showed, the area in red which covers over Broad Meadow Brook. What is happening with that area? And is that...yeah, right there, above where the green...that's all underwater anyway, that you're looking at, that creation of the floodplain storage within the wetland relocation area. That area in green is wet seasonally. Just about a few weeks ago, it was a huge lake. But the area in red, which consists of where the brook is, what is happening with that area?
That is to remain undisturbed, with the black hatching between the red lines. And I'll also note that the edge of the riverbank, which is...which was flagged by our consultant, Goddard Consulting, is slightly below the edge of that red line. It's actually this...the middle area between the two wetland hatches. So that it hatched in black is to remain undisturbed.
And if you go further up the scale that is alongside of where the storage facility is, what is happening with those wetlands that are there? Are those being dug out, or...if you keep going up? I don't know if you would call that the eastern side or western side of the property? Yeah, that area right in there where your cursor is right now. What is happening with that area?
That's to remain undisturbed. That's a wetland area. We wouldn't be doing any work in there. All we'd be doing is cleaning out the culverts.
Okay. And is there any planning on when snow removal happens? Where is the snow going? And any kind of chemicals that go out? Is it going to run off into these wetland areas? Because there's a...the parking lots seem to go right up to where the wetlands currently are. And if you were disturbing those in any way, is there a plan to keep stuff from going into the wetlands?
Yep, so first I'll address the proximity to the wetlands. The city of Marlboro has a 20-foot no disturb wetland buffer to act as a buffer between the edge of the wetlands and any developments. We're respecting that 20-foot buffer. No work is proposed within that area. As far as snow storage goes, snow is to be stored on site until it becomes too much. If we get a large storm or something, the management company will have to truck it off-site in accordance with the 2019 DEP Snow Storage Guidelines, which are referenced in our operation and maintenance plan. And additionally, we have several what are known as water quality units on site. These water quality units help to improve the quality of water, and there are certain standards that we need to meet to make sure that any water that's being discharged to the wetlands has first been properly treated prior to that discharge.
Okay. And any dealings with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation with the sidewalk that's going along Route 20 to that satellite parking lot down the street?
Yep, we're currently coordinating with DOT on that, and our traffic engineer has been coordinating that effort as well. We are proposing currently...you can see a narrow strip of a sidewalk along Route 20 connecting that satellite parking lot, known as Lot K, to the northeast with the main development site. So there will be a connection between those two.
Okay. So it will be right along Route 20? I don't know if you're familiar with Route 20, but it's a two-way highway, and that's quite a long distance for somebody to be walking along the highway on a five-foot sidewalk. Just saying. And in the wintertime, it'll be quite treacherous.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
David, would you... David, would you say another word about the water quality units? Question particularly is, how will they be monitored and maintained? And how will their effectiveness be be monitored?
Yep, so they are, you know, they're sized based on the contributing area going to them. And we've, we have an operation and maintenance plan that we include with all of our drainage reports. You know, we included it with this one as well, which basically uses the state standards for maintaining them. It typically involves twice a year a company coming on site and factoring out any sediment, hydrocarbons, anything that's been that's been collecting in those water quality units over the previous six months. And as long as they're maintained, they they work very well.
I have a question, if I may.
State your name, please.
My name is Chuck Packer, resident of Marlboro. A question that probably goes towards Dave, the engineer. Given the huge increase in hard surface area between the parking lots and all these buildings, I know you'd said there is going to be an increase in onsite storage of water. But now you are covering up. I can't tell there's no numbers on this, but you've got a couple of acres of hard surface area now. So there's no more natural percolation, which is happening currently on a farm. So have you figured out how much water is not going to be draining off all this hard surface area? And how much of that extra drainage you're adding is actually going to be filled in by plan, given the extra runoff?
Yep, so to address that, we're actually that that slide that you were on was was good. That site slide. Yeah, that one's good. So it's a little difficult to see in here, but there are several very large subsurface chamber systems. These are basically plastic chambers with an open bottom. Underneath them, they have well infiltrating materials such as crushed stone. And so you mentioned that there's hard surfaces being proposed over areas which previously infiltrated. We are required to provide a sufficient footprint with these to mimic the existing drainage patterns and infiltration patterns. We did do stormwater test pits out here. There is good infiltrating material. So that groundwater, which now hits the pavement and buildings, is simply redirected to the subsurface systems, which then exfiltrate. They also store water in very large storms, and then they they discharge to the wetlands. So we did do an entire watershed analysis, which ensures that the existing and proposed runoff conditions are similar. And that was part of a package that we submitted that was reviewed by engineering, conservation. So that is something that is a state requirement that we we need to look at in our drainage design.
Thank you.
Other comments? Let me return to the letters that we have from the Conservation Commission and from the engineer. We will Sue, is it necessary to read those into the record or simply note that they will be made part of the record?
No, you should read them. There's only Priscilla Ryder's and Tom Di Perseos.
Yes. And we also have two two letters or emails from.
Emails?
Yeah, from other others who are concerned and who have opinions to have raised and address these to the to the zoning board. So these should be read into the record as well. Tom, I'll share the load with you in reading some of these. I will now read the memorandum from Priscilla Ryder from the Conservation Commission regarding comments on Valaris Marlboro Waypoint Residential 339 Boston Post Road Special Permit Application Floodplain and Wetland Protection District. The Conservation Commission has had numerous meetings to review this Valaris multifamily housing project at 339 Boston Post Road. This is a complicated project with many layers. The hearing for the commission has been continued to July 30, 2020. However, at its last meeting on June 18, the commission did review the floodplain filling and compensatory storage proposed the most recent plans provided, which are titled Title Site Development Plans for Valaris Marlboro Prepared by Allen and Major Associates. Date, December 20, 2019, last revised May 18, 2020. As outlined in the City Ordinance, Section 650-23 Floodplain and Wetlands Protection District, floodplanes are protected to ensure that when we get large storm events, the floodplain can accommodate these flows. This is regulated by several sources. Under the State Wetlands Protection Act, which the commission enforces and the city's flood F W P D, in order for the city to participate in the flood insurance program, FEMA requires that the local community have the ability to enforce these rules. Rules state that floodplanes can only be filled if there's an equal or greater amount of floodplain created, floodplain compensation at the same elevations. By ensuring that they're at the same elevations, it will ensure that the upstream and downstream properties will not be flooded any more or less than in current conditions. The applicant has gone through the engineering exercise to show that they are indeed proposing to provide greater floodplain compensation than that which is being filled. They are filling floodplain areas that are shown on the two plan exhibit sheets provided as follows. The parking area and the remote parking area. Filled 129,038 cubic feet. Proposed floodplain compensation 135,201 cubic feet. For this location, they have provided an extra 6,163 cubic feet of flood storage. Three areas behind the proposed pool area. Fill is 21,898 cubic feet, proposed floodplain compensation 22,880 cubic feet. For this location, they've provided an additional 982 cubic feet of flood storage. In summary, 150,939 cubic feet of flood of current flood storage will fill, and 158,081 cubic feet of flood storage will be created, which is a total of 7,145 cubic feet of additional storage for the site. Therefore, the Conservation Commission concluded that the flood storage, as shown in the proposed plans, do meet the requirements of the Wetlands Protection Act and meet the criteria, the criteria of the F W P D. The commission is waiting for the city engineer, Tom Di Perseo, to finish his drainage calculation review for this project on the technical side of this. However, the commission believes the plans as presented meet this criteria, and therefore their opinion meets the design standards as set out in the F W P D ordinance. I will be attending your virtual meeting tonight and will be happy to answer any questions you have, sincerely, Priscilla Ryder. And then Tom Di Perseo's memo, which came in just today. To the Z B A and Conservation Commission from Tom Di Perseo, June 26, 2020, proposed site development 339 Boston Post Road East. I have completed a review of the supplemental information, including drainage report revised 51820 with respect to the Z B A application and Wetlands Protection Act notice of intent for the proposed Valaris Marlboro project at 339 Boston Post Road East. Based on this review, I have found that the stormwater analysis has been revised to adequately address previous comments provided. I am in agreement with the methodology and the assumptions used in the calculations, and that the revised design provides adequate compensatory flood storage and offsets for drainage structures from flood elevations and estimated seasonal high groundwater table. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact. Any other comment about either of those documents? Moving along, we have two emails, which I will read into the record. One is from Caroline Hanlon to the city councils Tuesday, June 30. It is my sincere hope that this project is not approved for a number of reasons. One, this type of housing provides for a transient population. Residents of the community without any quote skin in the game. For in for the purposes of this discussion, they are not homeowners. Typically do not have any long-term vision, plans to state, nor concerns for the community. We are a small city with some great things happening. However, construction of more rental housing in this location does not strengthen the city. In my opinion, it becomes a detraction. Two, Marlboro is ripe for opportunistic development due to our relatively affordable entry pricing when contrasted to surrounding communities. One has only to look at the Cube Smart development on Route 20. The development of this site should not then lead to a careless approach to other parts of Route 20 or the city in general. Three, it will have a negative impact on the homes, on the homes along Helen and Clark Drive. These are old and lovely entry, older lovely entry level homes, offering opportunities for first-time buyers as well as downsizers. Four, the development of 188 residential units represents a density that is a for-profit endeavor only. There is zero consideration to aesthetic impact a project like this brings to the city. Five, I believe this area may be part of what has been designated an opportunity zone, which I believe comes with federal tax incentives to construct this type of housing. This is counter to any large-scale planning for thoughtful development in our city. As a Realtor for over 30 years and a Marlboro resident for 25, it would be a complete shame to see this parcel destroyed by a forced dirty apartment complex. It doesn't matter how architecturally interesting or nor how much screening is done from the road. The city needs to take a longer view of housing and consider the actual needs of its residents and not succumb to quote raider-type developers. Parentheses, this is a large out-of-state developer with most of their developments serving areas with more than three times the population in our area. Developers chasing profits in this current climate. The city council to mayor and M E D C need to protect this community and work towards balancing our few remaining wonderful rural characteristics and meeting the contemporary demands of growth. Let's be smart about this. Say no. How about coming up with a plan to bring developers in to restore some of the fabulous older buildings in our city? There are many that are actually architecturally interesting. Best regards, Caroline Hanlon. And finally, to the Marlboro City Councilors from Cindy Zomar, whom we heard from earlier. To Marlboro City Councilors, Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, Conservation Commission, and Site Plan Review Committee. Good day. At the risk of chiming in with too little, too late, I would like to offer at least my humble opinion on the granting of various special permitting, leeway and approvals for the proposed development on the property that we all remember is McGee's Veterinary Clinic at 339 Boston Post Road. I have no vested interest in what happens there, but I do have a vested interest in what our city chooses to do to preserve some green space and leave a legacy for our grandchildren and beyond. We understand that when one inherits a huge piece of property and has no real ties to the area any longer, it is only natural to want to sell to the highest bidder and walk away. And only an owner generally has every such right. However, to make this sale and develop as planned, just about every commission, committee, and governing body in the city would have to make adjustments, grant special permits, and basically rewrite the zoning for the property. One would have to guess that when the original zoning and permitting was set up, it was done so for a reason, perhaps to do with all the wetlands. And that it should take a monstrous effort to overturn it with proof upon proof of the value added to the city to make these changes. As far as value added to the city, I can see that putting 188 multi-generational housing units would certainly raise some revenue, but at what cost to other departments? We are already excited about the new elementary school, but 188 units would bring literally hundreds of school-aged children. Will we need to immediately scout for another piece of property that could hold a new school? Will the middle school and high school need to be expanded? Will the MSBA be willing to help out again so soon, or would we have to cover a new building on our own? How will our police and fire departments be taxed with that many additional households? Will we have to do something to make sure our water supply is sufficient? What about our wastewater treatment plant? I think a comprehensive listing of pros and cons to the city might reveal that this is not a good use of that property and that the zoning regulations should stand as they are. An additional and sad piece to this is the potential loss of green space in an area from this area of the city that has already been marred by the Cube Storage Place, the huge new Shell Station, even the overcrowded parking at Garden, parking lot at Garden Remedies. Who doesn't enjoy peeking to see if any horses are out and about or other critters while driving by that property? How the towering complex improve the scenic drive through Marlboro after leaving the serene and beautiful Sudbury area? It will not. And forget about using Route 20 to get to and from work during rush hour because what is now a painfully slow and arduous journey, pre-COVID-19, of course, will likely resemble a parking lot for sure. Damn will force the youth to ways and GPS to find quicker routes, which in turn will put undue stress on our side streets, particularly the back roads toward Wolfam. Does DPW have enough time on their hands to fill even more potholes on every route to and from the city? I think not. Not without additional manpower and equipment. And another thing, my understanding is that there will be a bridge on the property to get to the additional parking lot for potentially hundreds more cars for these units. Won't that be an attractive site as one heads west on Route 20? Do we really want one of our main interests to the city to look like the overflow long-term lot at Logan? If no bridge, I heard that residents would have to traipse down Route 20 to get to that lot. And again, during heightened traffic times, what kind of safety issue is that going to cause, sidewalk or no sidewalk? As a Marlboro resident, if I lived anywhere near the property, especially in the Helen Drive area, I would be extremely worried about the new higher water table in my basement. Much of the McGee lands is wetland, is wetlands, including a stream. I was extremely interested to read city engineer's Di Perseo's study and suggestions on the potential problems that must be addressed. The list of precautions and tests that would be needed are lengthy. Yet again, why is there a need to go any further than just to realize that to make all these changes, allow all these exceptions, and grant all this special permitting is not necessary? The city is on solid legal ground to just say no. Another buyer will surface. Another plan will come up, and maybe this time it will be on a much smaller scale without the terrible ramifications that this particular plan seems to have. I would implore you to dig deep and think about why the current regulations are in place and then make the decision in good conscience that sometimes change is not for the better. Thank you for listening. Sincerely, Cindy Zomar. And I think we have no other documents that need to be made part of the record. Are there any other comments or that need to be stated at this point from the board or for anyone else?
So you have a raised hand from Victoria.
It disappeared.
Yeah, I don't see it. Okay. So a question to the board. Do we have enough information to for a vote? Do we need additional information? We have not heard. Sue, let me ask you this. Have we heard from the Board of Health or from the Planning Board?
No, not yet.
Do they intend to comment? Do you know?
They haven't gotten back to me today. It was mentioned that Planning Board comments would probably be with the Conservation Office. Priscilla, you still there?
Yeah, no, it would be those, engineering department would sort of speak. They need to.
I'm sorry, Priscilla. You're gobbled. Okay, here, here.
Okay. So I think it would be, engineering usually works with the Planning Board, so I don't know if if his comments reflect the Planning Board input or not.
Sue, I would like us to follow up with Board of Health and Planning Board to see if they have any input for us before we take a vote.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Do we, do we have agreement on that? It sounds, it seems as though we have at least one or possibly two other sources of information that we should hear from before we are in a position to vote on this.
Ralph?
Yes.
So is the public part of the meeting closed and it's just board discussion now?
Well, let me entertain a motion to that effect. I think we've heard from the petitioner and from other members of the public, so I think we can declare the public the public portion. we can declare the public portion of the meeting to be closed.
There seems to be a question from Victoria.
Yeah.
Hi, this is Victoria Rule again, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I sent a letter to Susan this morning that obviously was not extended to the board about my opposition to this plan, and I just wanted to state that for the record, there is another letter out there somewhere that Susan might be able to...
It's here, it's here.
Okay.
Is it all right if Tom Golden reads it?
Yes, that would be excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the... Hello, Zoning Board of Appeals. I have been a resident of Marlboro since 1987. I've raised a family here. I have a personal relationship with McGee Farm at 339 Boston Post Road. Dr. McGee was our dog's vet for many years until he closed his practice. I have bought my horses over 12 years through three changes in management at the farm. I know the land well and was sorry to see this pending sale to an out of state company without any ties or knowledge of the city of Marlboro. This property is almost 27 acres of precious green space here in the city of Marlboro, and much of the land is wet and unsuitable for building. The project in question is currently designed with four four-story buildings housing 188 high-end apartment units, including parking for 376 vehicles. This proposed project simply does not fit the buildable land available, nor does it fit the landscape surrounding the area of single-story buildings, even with the out-of-place Cube Storage Building that is three stories. At a conservation meeting in May, Goddard Consulting talked about adding excess fill to raise the front fields elevation to the same level as Route 20. There is significant difference between the front fields and Route 20. Those front fields include a small piece of protected wetlands and mature trees that would all be lost with this additional fill and excavation work to prepare the building site. Adding fill and excavation work may also affect the flood drains, the existing pond, the protected wetlands, and Broad Meadow Brook. Also, it can affect the Butters properties during the spring rains and after a snowy winter. Changing the way the water flows and drains through the property will also likely affect the Sudbury Reservoir. The project also includes an offsite parking area that would have to be accessed by walking along Route 20. There is not a shoulder to support a sidewalk where they propose this parking area. The elevation is considerably lower than the road and right now is full of annual spring water. There's also talk that Route 20 will undergo work in 2021, about the same time as this project. The project is expected to take 14 months to complete. That short distance alone, Route 20, will become a traffic problem not only during construction, but with the addition of 376 vehicles from those 188 units entering and exiting onto Route 20 will be a nightmare. Our backroads to avoid Route 20 will become more congested and dangerous with frustrated drivers. Also, in winter, the snow would be plowed onto that sidewalk, causing residents to risk walking along Route 20 to get off to that offsite park lot, who is responsible for the road, city of Marlboro or MDOT. The Zoning Board of Appeals should not accept this project as proposed. The added stress on our city resources, our fire and police departments, our crowded schools, even with the newly completed elementary school, our city water and sewage facilities, the DPW, all will be strained. Marlboro does not need to add to the already 3,600-plus apartment units in the city, even high-end costly units. I hope the Zoning Board of Appeals considers all aspects of this project. The 14-plus months of disruption along the already busy stretch of Route 20 will inconvenience residents of Marlboro and surrounding towns who drive that road. It may possibly stress our police and fire departments. This project will affect the day-to-day in the city of Marlboro during construction and beyond. It will change the look and feel of Marlboro now and into the future. This resident says no to this project. Thank you for your time. Victoria Rule, proud to live in Marlboro for 33 years.
Thank you, Tom. Victoria, you have your hand up again? Okay.
Before the board makes a motion of any sort, you should ask the general public who's in favor and who is in opposition to the petition.
Yes, are there any, I'm sorry, are there any members of the public who would like to speak either in support or in opposition to the petition?
I'd like to raise my hand.
Yes, state your name, please.
This is Chuck Packard again, Marlboro resident. The letter in the very beginning with a lawyer was saying what we're supposed to be talking about said just the wetlands, just this one little bit, but I would like to go on the record with some of the other folks who have talked tonight in the letters, that I do really feel that is a lot of cars, a lot of people, a lot of building going in on Route 20 that just seems totally out of place. And once again, we'll have a condo complex with hundreds of kids getting on buses, and those buses will be forced to stop on Route 20 because looking at this drawing that's on screen right now, they are once again not proposing any off Route 20 parking, no roundabout or anything for the buses to stop. And once again, traffic on Route 20 will come to complete stop another eight or so times for the various buses going to the various schools. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else to speak?
If anyone wants to speak, you have to unmute your microphone.
Yes, who's speaking, please?
Hi, this is Lila Rule speaking. I just, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to add that I'm very against this project. I don't think this is going to have a positive outcome for any of the residents. And there was a petition going around on Facebook, which has almost 1,000 signatures of people who are against it as well. So there are many people in disagreement with this proposal, so I just wanted to bring that up and say that there are not many people who are on board with this for as many reasons as were stated and many more.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else want to speak?
Yes, this is Julie Zomar, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I haven't used Microsoft Teams, I use Zoom, so I had to change some settings. Anyway, so I, you guys have heard from my mom, but I actually am a Marlboro resident myself now. I grew up, I've been here since 1990, and decided to move back two years ago and purchase a home here down on Simpson Road. And I know for one, I completely avoid Route 20 at all costs. I take any backroad I can already. So the idea that we would have this many more people and with each of those tenants, you have at least one, maybe two, maybe even three cars that you might potentially be having to deal with. So I'd like to see the fire department, the police department, everyone, have they, and maybe I missed it because I called in a little late, have all of them agreed to this as well? And my second point is, you know, as residents, when we try to buy a home or sell a home, if there are regulations in place, for instance, when you want to put up a shed or put up a fence and different things, you have to bend over backwards to try to get these things done based on regulations, and more often than not, you're told no. So I don't understand why it seems potentially that we are kind of bending over backwards for an organization to come in and take away a really beautiful green space that we need in our city. And this is just one more attraction that people will continue to say, you know what, I don't want to move to Marlboro, I'm going to go move to Sudbury, or Berlin, or Hudson even at this point, if we allow things like this to be built. And I understand you guys are going to try and make it as beautiful as possible, but let's be honest, a four-story building, you know, the Cube Smart is an eyesore already. Now to have a four-story, multiple buildings and multiple parking lots and bridges and potentially people walking all over the place and multiple cars just seems like, just a bad idea from the start. So I just wanted to raise my hand and say, I'm a proud Marlboro resident, but I'm not proud of this.
All right, thank you. The board does appreciate the concerns that have been raised, but at the same time, we have to remind all of you that our view here is very narrow. We are not being asked to approve, vote approval for this project. We are only being asked to consider whether the wetlands have been preserved and whether the construction that's being proposed satisfies the requirements for wetlands protection. So that is our very narrow scope here tonight, so I hope most of you will appreciate that. So are there other people who would like to speak? By saying that, I do not intend to suggest that we should not have others speak as much as they would like, so if there are others who would like to speak.
Can I just follow up with what you just said, Ralph? Can you tell us when there will be a chance for a greater scope of feedback if we are really narrowing down only on the wetlands issue?
I believe this entire project will have to go to the city council, and that would likely be the place where all of these issues will be discussed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public part of the meeting and move to board discussion.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, I'll call the roll. Bob Levine?
Yes.
Thomas Pope?
Yes.
Tom Golden?
Yes.
And Ralph Lofton votes yes. So at this point, the public portion of the meeting is closed, and we will move to discussion among the members of the board. So I guess the question stands, do we need to hear from other people? We have not heard from the Board of Health. We may have covered, the city engineer may have covered the Planning Board issues, but I for one would like to hear from the Board of Health before we move to a vote.
Yeah, also, I think we should clarify that the Planning Board was addressed by the, we should know for sure, it was covered by the city engineer.
Yeah, agreed. Sue, would you follow up with them on that point?
Yes, I will.
And then, we either need from the Board of Health, we need either, we need some sort of statement that either they have something to say about the project or that they intend to say nothing. So either of those would be sufficient. So given that we then are in need of some additional information, it remains likely to move the issue to a subsequent meeting. And so I would entertain a vote to continue the meeting to a date certain.
Ralph?
Yes, Tom.
It's Bob.
Oh, Bob, I'm sorry, I saw Tom's name pop up. Bob, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so, hi, there's only a few comments, and I'd like to also get Priscilla's take on my comments. From what I understand here, and we had two really beautiful, well-crafted emails from Cindy and Caroline, and I'm on board with those 100%. But what we have here is, from my understanding, and what this board has to look at for this special permit is to try to simplify what's happened, is they have to dig a bigger bathtub than what they're excavating, so that there's no interruption to the water flow upstream or downstream. And it seems to me that's the only thing that we have to consider here. And based on what I've read from the people that are experts in the subject matter, as far as I'm concerned, Cindy and the engineer, they've met that burden. And my assumption is they've done their homework with other departments of the city to come to these conclusions, and the conclusions seem to support that they've met the burden to prove what they have to for this special permit. So, Priscilla, is that my understanding of what we're deciding here and what input from any other department in the city might change the conclusions that you and the engineer have come to?
I think your assumption or your conclusion is correct that they've sort of met the burden of sort of the engineering portion of it. I guess, you know, the special permit requires that other boards weigh in, so it doesn't hurt to have Board of Health and Planning Board weigh in, but again, I agree that sort of the technical issue of you filled the bathtub, you have to create another bathtub that can get filled with that same reach of water during a flood sort of has been met, so I would agree with that.
Okay, so, Ralph, what information would you expect that the Board of Health could contribute to this question of have they dug a big enough bathtub to absorb the water from the problem that they're creating by building this?
Well, I'm looking at the zoning regulation, and it states, among other things, that we can grant this special permit if we find that the proposed construction and use and proposed change in grade and/or proposed change in grade will not derogate from the intent and purpose of the district nor endanger the health and safety of the public. And sort of it's that phrase of, it won't endanger the health and safety of the public that suggests to me that perhaps the Board of Health should sign off on this.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
It may be, but that's it.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. Yeah, I'd like to, you know, just once again, make sure that the folks that are here that took the time to come and comment understand that, you know, we're the first step in a long process for this project to be completed, and we don't really have any standing to block a permit because we don't like the looks of the development, or we're worried about the impact of the schools and things like that, which we all are. We have to consider just the details required to issue the special permit. So I'm going to leave it with that and see what other comments other folks have.
Yeah. Tom Pope, Tom Golden, any comments?
I still think that we should just get it clarified by the Planning Board and by the Board of Health.
I concur with that, that we should hear from both departments on that, and then we can make an intelligent, informed decision. All right. So, do I hear a motion to continue this hearing to a date certain? And Sue, I guess we need to consult calendars if that's the case. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to continue the hearing until we hear from the Board of Health and the Planning Board.
Do I hear a second? I second that. It's Tom Pope. All right, shall we take a vote on this? Tom, how do you vote? Yes?
Ralph, can I ask one question?
Yes, please, Bob.
Sue, how long do we have to have this next meeting?
We can have it, I forgot my calendar, we can have it, you know, in a week, next week. week if you want to just meet, and it should be quick. I mean, you closed the public portion of the hearing. So you're just waiting, you're just waiting for clarification from Planning Board and Board of Health to want to see if they have any issues. And if you... Okay?
Yeah, the reason I ask is I'm out of town from the 11th to the 25th.
Well, could other members of the board be available next week?
I would.
I am.
Yep, and so am I.
Okay, so you want to try for next Tuesday?
Yes, we haven't completed the vote on the motion, so, but yes, if we could do it next Tuesday, that would be good. So, Tom Pope, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Yes, to continue to, what's the date, Sue?
July 7.
7th, yeah.
I vote yes to continue it on the 7th.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
And Ralph Lofton votes yes. All right, in that case, I think we are in a position to adjourn. And do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Move, second? On the motion to adjourn, how do you vote? Thomas Pope?
Yes.
Tom Golden?
Yes.
Bob Levine?
Yes.
And Ralph Lofton votes yes, and we are adjourned.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Priscilla.
You're welcome, good night, bye.
Thank you, good night.